One. I'd like to call the July 6 meeting of the Board of Commissioners to order. My name is Commissioner Sue Perigin. I am the Mayor Pro Tem and I'm filling in for Mayor Alcott this evening. So, bear with me. We'll do the best we can. Let's get this started. And Commissioner Brown will provide the invocation and the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Commissioner Perigin. I would love to introduce you all to Brother Sean Sardazan and Brother Bush from Corner View Community Church. I've asked Brother Bush to kind of give an overview of an inspiring new ministry they have called You Matter and Brother Sean Sardazan to do our opening prayer. So, if you all want to come forward. So, Brother Bush, if you'll give us a little overview of that exciting new community outreach you're doing.
Okay. I work for the disabled and that's what I do for a living, special needs. I've been working for them for the past five years and it has really grown to my heart to just be there for people. The church was changed to Corner View Community because we thought it was important to reach the community and not be self-indulged. So, as time went on, I've been the pastor there for three years now and we're doing different things to open up, to reach people. One thing, we brought a school table in, our church, to steam table to feed the homeless. We took the whole downstairs and turned it into community access. We have four openings, four closed closets for people that need in the community. We also built a shelf and soon to be joining Feed America. And also, our biggest thing is the You Matter program where Brother Sean is the basic minister of that and to encourage disabled people. We'll be having one program once a month that will bring young people and special needs people together. My cousin is Felicia Bland and we get together and we used to teach kids in the school. We would go to different schools and we'd teach positive living and different things like that, just, you know, different things like that. So, now that You Matter is here, she'll be teaching dance, I'll be teaching music. We have the people play games and all people that's looking forward, that's like in the college and stuff and looking forward to coming together with Brother Sean and the special needs community. We'll bring them all together, play games and do stuff with them. And we do a program to raise money to also get our church handicap accessible so that we can really speak to special needs. And You Matter is to let people know if you're homeless. We also started a recovery class at our church. So, the community has changed over the years, all different nationalities. So, we're trying to open up to bring people together and also give a positive venue for people to learn how to live together, basically it.
Thank you so much, Brother Bush, for the inspiring work your church is doing in our community. And if everyone wants to stand while Brother Sean leads us in our opening prayer.
Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for this time in this place. God, we ask that you would be with each and every person in this chamber with our ideas and our communication with one another would be open and it would be pleasing unto thee, oh God. Amen.
Amen.
Well, we'll turn with me and we'll recite the pledge together.
Pledge of allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you both so much.
Thank you so much. Just having a conversation with Sean, who I've met before at the Hive and other places and I met him, but Sean said that his mother told him that he would wind up going places that most people never go. And I'd say this would be one of them and my mother told me the same thing and look at us both, Sean. How about that? So, thank you.
And I echo that. I guess all the work that you guys are doing, I've witnessed it at that church, it's a blessing that continued the success and everything that you guys are doing.
Ashley, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Bailey.
Here.
Commissioner Beasley Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Hill.
Here.
Commissioner Mayor Pro Tem Perigin.
Here.
And Mayor Alcott, who is absent.
Do we have any awards and recognitions here tonight? Mr. Mizel?
Not.
I do have something that I'd like to say. It's a little, it's not an award or maybe sort of a recognition, but the Fourth of July has ended and this is mostly for the folks that are out there. It's no longer acceptable or legal to have fireworks going off in your neighborhoods and I have gotten maybe three or four complaints, which I take very seriously, that we do have animals, we have, you know, veterans, we've got all kinds of folks. Hey, there are lots of animals that love fireworks and lots of veterans that love fireworks, but for those that don't, we do need to be respectful and shut them off now. It's time for them to go off. So, just please be respectful and I hope everybody took the time to be grateful and say thank you for this, the nation that we live in and the freedoms that we have as opposed to pretty much anywhere else in the world. So, you know, stop and reflect in what we do have and I think you'll see that it's pretty remarkable. So, thanks, everybody, and just remember the word respect when you're thinking about lighting that fuse on that loud thing. So, appreciate it. We do have a public hearing this evening of which our city engineer, Melissa Kansler, will come up and present about our liquid fuel tax. So, we're, she promises it's brief. She said I'll be brief. I heard it. What is brief? Let's define brief. Just kidding. Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you. Again, I appreciate the opportunity to present this afternoon. It's good to be back. It's been a while since I've been in the commission chambers. I did this virtually last year, not nearly the same. Again, this is our hearing that is required to kind of share with the community and you guys how we intend to use our municipal aid and coal and mineral severance tax money that we receive each year from the state. For those who may not know, municipal aid, we often call that our liquid fuel tax money, LFT. So, if I say LFT, that's what I mean. That tax is put on every gallon of gas that is sold in the state. So, likewise, the state will turn around and give it to communities like Bowling Green and Warren County and those funds are intended to be used for roadway improvements, transportation So, real briefly, and I'll get into the details of the expenditures. Currently, the fund balance from last year's carryover and unencumbered funds from FY21 is $1,083,000. The projected revenue and interest earnings along with general fund transfers into this fund is $1,837,150. Now, we do, we have identified in this year's budget some uses for that money to total $1,950,000. The first of which is our street overlay or resurfacing project for $1,500,000. Our sidewalk curb and gutter rehab project at $100,000. Intersection spot improvements at $250,000. And finally, our contribution toward the Highland Way and Emmett Avenue realignment, which I believe was brought to you guys a few months ago perhaps for $100,000. So, after those expenditures, the fund balance is projected to be $970,150. Briefly, our upcoming overlay, we have just wrapped up or are wrapping up the FY21 paving project. You've probably seen a lot of our streets going. We are hopeful to get this next bid, we receive bids, it'll be on the next agenda if all goes as planned. We are projecting 18 miles of city streets to be paved. In that paving, we do more than just pave. Oftentimes, there's some rehab that has to be done on streets. We have requirements from, federal requirements for ADA complacency. So, we have handicap ramps. So, anytime we pave a street, we upgrade the ramps. So, while we're there, we get that done. So, in that 18 miles, there's lots that has to be done and that, we're projecting $1.5 million, same as last year. The second use for these municipal aid revenues are our sidewalk recon at $100,000. This is not the same as our sidewalk program. This is not new sidewalk. This is looking at what we have, focusing on anything that might be safety hazards for pedestrians. It could be trip hazards. We look at, we've kind of taken a different approach the past few years. We have zones, priority zones, and so we move around each year to those zones and we've started kind of in the downtown campus area and then we're moving out because those are the older sidewalks that have the most needs. So, we see anything from cracked, small trip hazards to, you know, missing sections of sidewalks. So, those are what we use these funds for. We will begin our evaluation here in the next probably month so we can identify the needs and put those funds to use. Again, this is the second year, I believe, we've kind of allocated money for intersection spot improvements and, you know, we were budgeting $250,000, hopeful that we can get through all the locations that you see here. But throughout the year, when we're driving through town, we see things, boy, we could really improve this intersection if we did this. Whether it's aging infrastructure, maybe a traffic signal needs to be upgraded, maybe we need to widen a little bit, improve the turning, you know, just here and there. So, the locations I've listed, there's something maybe different in each one of those that could be used, could be done differently. So, Creason Street and University Boulevard, for instance, that's a limited turning movements there. We think we could improve that. Reservoir Hill Park at the intersection with High Street, there's a whole lot of asphalt right there. I think we could do something to improve that circulation, that safety in that area by NCS. The concrete intersection at Double Springs and Beauty Avenue is in bad shape. Main Avenue and Chestnut Street, we did not upgrade that signal back in '06 when we did all the downtown. So, there's a lot of rework there. There's some things we need to get out of the right of way a little bit and improve pedestrian access there. Hogle Drive and US 31W bypass, that's just an awkward intersection. The way you come off of the bypass, you have to really slow down, so we thought we could improve that. And finally, Gary Farms Boulevard and West Park Drive. We see opportunity there to improve the capacity and operation of that signal. So, hopeful that we can get this done and get through all those projects. If not, we'll do as much as we can with that $250,000. And finally, as I mentioned, the Highland Way, Emmett Avenue realignment. As you may be aware, the state is widening Nashville Road from the roundabout out towards Campbell Lane. So, the section that isn't wide, they're coming through there. And part of that success really depends on realigning Highland to match Emmett at the traffic signal. You can make it safer, control that movement. The developer in that tract of land is currently developing that property, so we wanted to make sure that that access that they build is to our standards. It's wide enough, it's thick enough, it can turn itself into a city street when the state comes through and minds arose. So, the city decided to, I guess, partner, private-public partnership, $100,000 there. So, that is another use of our municipal aid monies. And finally, today, I want to talk a little bit about the second source of income outside of the municipal aid is the coal and mineral severance tax. Much like the LFT monies that we get, this is a tax put on coal and mineral haulers in the state of Kentucky. And because Warren County has been identified as an impacted county, we stand to get revenue from that source. Again, these funds are to be used towards transportation-related activities, whether it's upgrades, safety, anything related to a roadway network. Currently, I didn't list it up there, but the fund balance from unencumbered funds from FY21 is $163,000 at the end of the FY, projecting a revenue of $31,000, not nearly as much as the LFT monies. And then, we have actually identified a project to use this money for this year. $30,000 is estimated to improve or replace the guardrail along Riverview Drive that's going out to Beach Bend. It's really old, it's been hit a few times, it's in bad shape. It looks bad. So, we don't, you know, we feel like that's a good use of these funds. Katie was telling me earlier too, in recent years, we have not had a project identified for this funding, rather we use that money for any salt in the wintertime that we may need, depending on, you know, if it's a mild winter, we don't have to dip into it. If it's not such a mild winter, we may need. So, she said we had another $15,000 remaining in that budget for salt this winter. So, give or take, may need, may not. So, at the end of that, if we use that for the Riverview Guardrail expenditures, the ending balance would be $164,000 in that fund. I think that's all I have. I told you I'd be brief, but I know it's new. Carlos, you have not heard this probably before. I don't know if you've sat in previous years, LFT hearings, but do you have any questions?
I got a question. On the sidewalk, the rehab of sidewalks?
Yes.
Am I imagining this or did the state say that they were going to help us out with those in order for us to take over the state sidewalks? Is that part of that project or is that separate?
That is separate, although very similar rehab. That is actually a project in itself that has been bid and is pending award to, and the state did provide the money to get that done, a much larger project.
Right.
But all of those sidewalks are in state right of way. And yes, once we've made all those improvements and fixed those safety hazards, as we call them. And I failed to mention, you know, we can make our money go a lot further if we use, there's a different method. You can cut sidewalk and I don't know if anybody's seen the downtown, the company that comes in and just cuts it back. If it's not more than about half an inch, you can just trim that back and move on. It's amazing how quick they can get those done. A lot of areas, the sidewalks are cracked beyond repair, you know, the tree roots are buckling them up. So, you know, those have to come out. We get a contractor in. Sometimes we use in-house resources, our operations division is capable, but that's kind of outside of this money, but we try to get as many as we can with these funds.
The whole big improvement in sidewalks going like up and down the bypass and those state roads that are horrible.
Yes, yes. In much need of attention.
Okay, thank you.
For sure.
That's all I had. Anybody any comments or questions here?
I don't have any questions. If I do, I'll just email you.
Right, I was going to say, yeah, feel free to ask any questions. If the public has any questions, I think the deadline for comments tomorrow. Again, we'd like to start using this money, current budget year, in the next agenda, I believe, as soon as in the next Board of Commission agenda. Just let me know. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Melissa. Good to see you back in person.
Yes, you too, thanks.
It's good to see everybody in person. There's, it goes without saying. Mr. Mizel, any comments this evening?
Amen.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So, we're going to move on to our approval of minutes. I need a motion and a second.
So, move.
Melinda Hill, motion, second by Carlos Bailey. You're going to have to forgive me that I might stumble over some of this, but it'll be okay.
Doing great.
We're going to get through this together.
Yes, we will.
Okay, motion by Hill, second by Bailey. Ms. Jackson.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Okay, municipal order number 2021 dash, oh, I am so sorry. I want to move municipal order number 2021-107 to the end of the agenda, please. So, we'll get started with municipal order 2021-108.
Municipal order approving the promotion of Courtney Borland to the position of Office Associate Two in the Police Department.
So, move. Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Beasley Brown.
This is a career path advancement promotion and I'd like to ask Erin Holsey, our HR director, to come make the recommendation.
Holsey, good to see you.
Hi, you too. Good afternoon. So, as some of you may know, we have a career pathing program for our office associates. It was just updated recently and it allows someone who is brought into the city as an Office Associate One, after they spend two years in their position, to take some tests to show their proficiency and their skills and then be promoted. So, we do that twice a year. This year, we had one person apply. That was Courtney Borland from the Police Department. She works in the records. If you have any questions about the Office Associate Career Path Program, feel free to ask. But just to say a little bit about Courtney, if you'll stand, please. Courtney went to Grayson County High School. She has a bachelor's degree from Morehead State University and a master's degree from Western Kentucky University. She has been with the department since April of 2019. So, she passed her test with flying colors. So, we're very happy that she deserves this promotion. Any questions?
Congratulations. Just congratulations to Courtney for several things, it looks like. So, good for you. Way to go. Glad to have you. Any questions or comments? Call the roll.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Let's give her a hand. Okay, moving on. Municipal order number 2021-109. Ms. Jackson.
Municipal order approving the probationary appointment of Andrew Kilborn and Larry Zuniga to the position of Police Officer in the Police Department.
Don't move. Second.
That's okay. Motion by Beasley Brown, second by Hill. I think that's who I heard first. Ms. Jackson.
Well, I'll take this.
Oh, I am so sorry.
Commissioner Perigin, sorry. Occasionally, not very often, we get opportunity to go out and take advantage of recruiting or bringing in certified police officers. We have that opportunity tonight to hire two certified officers and I'll let Ms. Holsey give you the details of this, but we're recommending the hiring of these two certified officers.
So, we open our applications for certified officers year-round, so just any police officers that are out there looking and wondering, you can apply anytime and that is the case that has happened today. What's a little bit unique today is both the certified officers that we are hiring are actually rehires with the city of Bowling Green and so we know both of these police officers. There's a great benefit to hiring a certified police officer to the city and one is that they don't have to repeat that 20-week course and so they are useful and able to get out on the street much quicker. We do, however, do a lot of initial training. Both of these officers will go through that training even though they've already been with our department. So, with us tonight is Andrew Kilborn, if you want to stand up. And then Larry Zuniga is not with us. He moved away with his family and is in the process of moving back, so that's why he is not with us tonight. There's information about both gentlemen in the memo that I sent you, so I'm available if you have any questions about hiring these certified police officers.
Any questions or comments? I do want to say thank you. I met this nice young man out in the hallway and it's exciting to see people want to come back. That's a true testament and I'm going to point out our leadership back here. Mike Delaney and Assistant Chief, he's our Chief of Police, if anybody doesn't know, and Assistant Chief Penny Bowles, that's what leadership does. It creates organizations that people realize when they leave, hey, maybe it wasn't so bad, I maybe want to go back there. So, thank you all very, very much for every day and every minute of every hour that you guys work on our behalf in public safety. That can't be said enough. You know, Safety Dave is shaking his head like, yeah, stay safe, doing it. Thanks. Okay, how about we call the roll, Ashley?
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Okay. Congratulations. Okay, municipal order 2021-110. Ms. Jackson.
Municipal order approving the probationary appointment of Christopher Keenan to the position of Operations Technician One in the Public Works Department.
So, move.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Bailey, Mr. Mizel.
So, we just have a few more of these personnel appointments, but this one is an opening we have in operations, Public Works operations. I think this will get us to full complement. We had one vacancy still out there due to resignation and I'll let Erin make her recommendation for Mr. Keenan.
Yes, I would like to invite Mr. Keenan to go ahead and stand. So, we do have one vacancy. Christopher was recruited from a group that we did a couple of weeks ago and so it's the same group of people that we interviewed, same interview panel, everything like that. Just a little bit more delay in the selection and getting through all of the pre-employment stuff. And so, some information about Christopher Keenan, he is a graduate of Southmore High School and he's been employed by Southern Touch Lawn and Landscape as a crew leader for several years, so he'll be very familiar with the work that he will be doing, keeping our city taken well-maintained and taken care of. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Comments or questions from anybody?
Congratulations. What year did you graduate?
2018.
You graduated with my daughter.
Really?
Yeah.
Let's get him hired here first, then we'll congratulate him. Make sure he's good. Okay, Ms. Jackson. Ashley, call the roll.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Way to go. I will say promotions and hiring is the by far best part of this job right here, okay? Love to see people move up and love to see people move in. I did fail to say one thing before I got started into the agenda items. I see there's a lot of new faces here and that is awesome. We love for people to come to City Hall and we want to hear from people. The way to do that is to sign up on that clipboard right back there next to the officer. He can vanna white it there. There it is. And it'll be in the order that your name appears, okay? That's for public comments.
At the end of the meeting.
At the end of the meeting, yes. But if you want to sign up for public comments, that's how you do it. So, thank you. Everybody, don't rush. Okay, municipal order number 2021-111. Ashley.
Municipal order approving the probationary appointment of Craig Austin to the position of Trades Worker Electrician in the Parks and Recreation Department.
So, move. Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Beasley Brown. Ashley.
Jeff.
Oh, I'm sorry. Jeff.
Okay, I'll be Ashley.
Well, why don't you all switch seats and I'll get it right.
So, Parks Maintenance has been without an electrician for some time now due to the promotion of Mr. Scott going to Neighborhood Community Services Division for an electrical inspector up there. So, we have a candidate before us tonight, Mr. Austin, that can fill this role that we have vacant and like Ms. Holsey to come up one more time and introduce this item.
Thank you, Mr. Mizel.
Last time. So, we do have a vacancy and just to clarify, we do have two electricians on staff, so we have one who's been carrying the brunt of the work since Brian went over to do inspecting. And this position is kind of a tough one to fill for us because we're really looking for someone with a variety of skills and so we were able to find 13 people who applied. Not all of those people are qualified. Actually, most of them are not. They do have to be a master electrician. So, we currently do not have an apprenticeship program even though we are looking to do that sometime in the future. We think that would be really good for the city for career pathing, but at this time we do require these to be master electricians. We found and recruited Craig Austin. He's not with us tonight, but he's from Russellville. He's been in the Kentucky Army National Guard for 23 years. He is a master electrician. He's also a master in HVAC, so really helpful to us and we're excited to have him join our team. So, if you have any questions, let me know.
Questions or comments? Yes, we could say congratulations to him at a distance and look forward to his service. Municipal order number 2021, I'm sorry, we need to call the roll. I am so sorry. So, I told you I was green.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Sorry about that. Ashley will keep me straight, I promise you. Municipal order number 2021-112.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2021-28 for Lover's Lane Soccer Complex Parking Lot Overlay Project from Charles Dewey's Construction, Inc. of Franklin, Kentucky in the amount of $150,760.
So, move. Second.
A motion by Hill, second by Beasley Brown. Jeff.
Commissioner, if it's okay, I'd like to discuss these next two items together. They're very related to save a little time, but we are in need of resurfacing the Lover's Lane Soccer Complex Parking Lot out front, just the front one, asphalt overlay. We went out for bid, got two bids and Charles Dewey's Construction is our low bidder here for $150,760. All of this is budgeted in the Parks Improvement Fund and so we're ready to go with that. And then, we have a second project where we are needing to resurface the parking lot across Wynn's Golf Course. It's in need of repair and overlay and we went out for bid on that one as well.
Got two of the same bids, and Charles Dewey's Construction again is the low bidder on that one for $57,710, and it's being paid for out of the Parks Improvement Fund as well. Both of these were in the budget and planned for, and we are in need of getting that work done.
Questions or comments from here? Everybody, everybody good? All right, can we call the roll?
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigent.
Yes. So we'll vote on municipal order 2021-113.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 202129 for Crosswynn's Pro Shop Parking Lot Overlay Project from Charles Dewey's Construction, Inc. of Franklin, Kentucky, in the amount of $57,710.
Don't move.
Second.
It's a motion by Hill, second by Beasley Brown. Municipal order number 2021, I'm sorry, roll call.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigent.
Yes. Getting ahead of myself. Municipal order number 2021-114.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 202115 for North Sunrise Drive and Kenton Street Drainage Improvements from Scott &amp; Ritter, Inc. of Bowling Green, Kentucky, in the amount of $130,939.
Don't move.
Second. Motion by Beasley Brown, second by Hill. Any questions or comments, Mr. Misel?
This is just a drainage improvement, actually two projects, one on North Sunrise Drive and then another one, this is the second one we're doing on Kenton. This is near 16th Avenue, and we are going to go in and install storm piping, drainage structures, new curbing gutter, repair any driveways that we need to repair. And we went out for bid for both these projects to do together, and we got one bid from Scott &amp; Ritter, and that is for $130,939. This is going to be paid for out of the Stormwater Fund. Greg Meredith's here to answer any questions you might have on this.
Anybody have any questions or comments? I'm going to drag Greg up here. He needs it, he needs it.
Just one comment, just really grateful for you all always going out there and helping citizens with any issues they have, and drainage is definitely one that we're seeing a lot of lately, so just thank you all for all the work you do throughout the year, helping neighborhoods and citizens make sure that they have safe places to live.
No accident, they're accredited. They're awesome. No? Okay, let's see here, where are we? Roll call, please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigent.
Yes. See. Municipal order number 2021-115.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting negotiations after sealed bidding for bid number 202116 for Johnson Drive and Dennis Way Sidewalk Construction from Scott &amp; Murphy, Inc. of Bowling Green, Kentucky, in the amount of $524,343.75.
So.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Beasley Brown, Mr. Misel.
So as you all know, we use CDBG money to do neighborhood improvement projects such as this one right here. We're actually in our third neighborhood that we've used this CDBG money for. This is going into Census Block 103.3 and 103.4, and this is one of six areas we're slowly getting through. But this is a sidewalk project for Johnson and Dennis. This, we, what we do is we go into the neighborhood, we get neighborhood comments from the neighbors, what they want to see in their neighborhood. We also have an internal staff group that works on this and evaluates what the highest needs are, but this was deemed to be very high of need, and we are going, looking at 1,645 linear feet of sidewalk on Johnson Drive and roughly 775 feet of sidewalk on Dennis Way. And this came in a little bit over budget, so we only had one bidder, so we were allowed to go back and negotiate with that bidder, and that was Scott &amp; Murphy, and got them down to a revised lower cost of $524,343. And Nick and Brent worked on this one with use of CDBG money. Here, can answer any questions you might have.
Any here any questions or concerns or comments?
Would you mind just pointing out on the map we have? Because it's just a little bit, like you can't read the road names on it. You got it, okay.
Sorry about that.
Oh, no worries.
I've got the same map right here, so in blue, on the right part of the map, that's going to be this new sidewalk.
Ours is just black and white.
Yeah, we got black and white.
So I apologize.
Start from the practice field there, Nick, and kind of work over if you can.
So from the practice field there on the right where WKU is, to the left, you've got a straight line there. That's going to be the sidewalk on Johnson Drive that extends from Old Morgantown Road to Gary, and then branching off, you know, about midway down to the left will be the sidewalk on Dennis Way that will go and connect to the existing sidewalk that currently stops behind the former Dishman-McGuinness School.
Thank you. Now, I can see it now, thank you so much.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you, Mr. Cook. Can you call the roll?
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigent.
Yes. Municipal order number 2021-116.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 202136 for Clear Lane Enhanced De-icer from Cargill, Inc. of North Olmsted, Ohio, in the amount of $94,470.
Don't move.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Bailey. Mr. Misel.
We are in good shape as far as de-icer, but you don't buy de-icer in December or January, you buy it in the summertime, and so that's what we're here for, before you tonight for. We've got an opportunity here to lock in a price with Cargill at $94.47 a ton. This is basically a purchase option for lack of, if we don't need it, but we have until July 1st of '22 to buy more de-icer if we need it at this price, so that's what this is before you. They are kind of a sole source on this product that we use and recommend your approval of this, this purchase if we, if we need it. Greg's here, can answer any questions you might have.
Certainly don't want to buy it when it's a hot commodity, I'm sure. Hopefully it won't be this year, but you never know. Any comments, questions? Call the roll.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigent.
Yes. Municipal order number 2021-117.
Municipal order authorizing the appointments and designations of agents for the city of Bowling Green under Public Law 93288 in the event of disaster.
Don't move.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Beasley Brown, Mr. Misel.
But as you all remember, we had some storms back in February and March that did, did some damage flooding and that sort of thing, so when we went to apply to FEMA, we realized that our designees weren't up to date. I think I was not listed, nor Katie, and so we are here tonight to kind of clean that up. This is kind of a housekeeping issue, designated me, Katie, and Dave Wasbro, our safety risk manager, to sign off on these applications and go after this FEMA money as we can when we incur costs, so that's all this is about. Mr. Wasbro's here with us tonight, can answer any questions on this. He's worked on this for us and put this together.
Thank you, Mr. Wasbro. Anybody? Have any comments or questions? Anything? Seems pretty straightforward, okay. Call the roll.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigent.
Yes. Municipal order number 2021-118.
Municipal order authorizing the acceptance of a grant from the Kentucky Department for Libraries and Archives through the Kentucky Local Records Program in the amount of $1,158.
Don't move.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Beasley Brown, Mr. Misel.
This grant here was originally requested for $8,430, but we realized 30-some boxes really didn't need scanning, so didn't have to be held in retention, so we knocked this down to $1,158. I know that sounds small potatoes, but every dollar counts, and this is money we can get from the state to do some scanning and retention of documents through our records management division, so recommend your approval. Ashley can answer probably questions on this project. She oversees records management.
I'll reiterate what you said, every dollar does count. These are all taxpayer dollars. Any comments or questions up here? Call the roll.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigent.
Yes. Municipal order number 2021-119.
Municipal order authorizing the submission of a grant application and acceptance of grant funds from the U.S. Department of Justice, Bureau of Justice Assistance, Office of Justice Programs for fiscal year 2021, Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Funds in the amount of $32,457.
Don't move.
Second.
All four.
Sorry, I got a little.
It's okay.
All those numbers ran together.
I think I heard a motion by Beasley Brown first and a second by Hill, and Mr. Misel.
So Police Department wants to apply for this JAG grant, and this actually is, it's a great grant, there's no match required, but we would split it with the county, we would use our half, the $16,229 to buy us roughly, I think we can get three digital in-car cameras for our police cruisers, and the county has some other purposes they're going to use their money for that's in the memo, so Chief Delaney's here tonight if you have any questions on use of this money, but we've gotten JAG money for a long time, so good source, good grant, and thanks to Nick for his assistance on this as well.
Any questions or comments? Call the roll.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigent.
Yes. Municipal order number 20, municipal order number 2021-120.
Municipal order authorizing the Intermodal Transportation Authority, Inc. to grant the Warren County Water District a permanent sewer easement in the Kentucky Transpark.
Don't move.
Second.
I had a motion by Hill, second by Beasley Brown, Mr. Misel.
So as you all know, we have to approve a lot of things that go on up in the Transpark. This is just one small issue that where they needed an easement for the permanent sewer that Warren County Water District is putting in. This is in the new land that we just bonded. Hillary worked on this, I'm going to turn it over to her to answer any questions or give you a summary, but Hillary, you want to explain a little bit more?
Basically, they're just requesting an easement in order to do these water and sewer improvements on that new parcel so that those new companies can come in. Meredith's here too, if you have any questions, and there's a map in there that shows the red line where the sewer easement will go.
Any questions or comments? So Jeff and I serve on this board, so we, we kind of keep up to snuff on what's going on out there, and it's all good. Very positive out at the Transpark. So if you have any comments or questions, call the roll.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigent.
Yes. Municipal order 2021-121.
Municipal order authorizing the city of Bowling Green to purchase property located at 630 Oaklawn Way.
Don't move.
Motion by Hill, second by Bailey, Mr. Misel.
So as I mentioned earlier, we had a couple flooding incidents, occurrences back in February and March. On February 28th, we had five inches of rain to fall in 24-hour period, which causes a lot of problems around town. So we had one property on Oaklawn Way that flooded all the way into the living space of the house, and so we established our Stormwater Fund roughly 10, 11 years ago to handle these type situations. This is, this property should have never had a structure built on it. We don't know how it ever got there, but we're coming to you tonight. We discussed this with you a couple weeks ago, coming to you tonight with a proposal to buy this, this property. We've had it appraised, and it appraised at $152,000, and we recommend going ahead and getting this property, modifying the site to improve stormwater runoff and put a drainage easement in there to protect from any future problems in this area on this street. So Greg is here, he's worked on this with the property owner, and we are recommending the purchase of this property to mitigate that, that problem over on that street.
Okay. Can I ask you a question? Greg, how big is the property? Is it? Some of those.
If memory serves me correct, it's about nine-tenths of an acre, maybe, maybe an acre. It's.
Some of those properties over in that area.
It's very deep, yeah.
Be cool, where did, where did Little Brent go?
He left.
Oh, okay.
He knew you're, no, I'm.
Did he? It'd be cool to have a little pocket park over there. Just a thought.
Most of it is, is low.
Unusable?
Yeah.
Just a thought. That's, that's a pretty densely populated area.
There's also a cave in the back of it, right?
There's a cave that's, that's covered and protected, but yeah, so that might, on the back side, that might be something that's possible.
Idea, we're looking for little places and neighborhoods, right? Pass that along to Little Brent.
I will.
Thanks. Any questions, comments up here? Call the roll.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigent.
Yes. Municipal order 2021-122.
Municipal order approving a job development incentive program employee withholding credit agreement with Fruhoff.
Don't move.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Beasley Brown, Mr. Misel.
This was a project that we discussed at the Job Development Incentive Committee just a week or so ago. Commissioner Hill and Commissioner Beasley Brown serve on that committee. Katie is the program manager, so I'm going to turn it over to Katie to give you the nuts and bolts of this incentive agreement with this new company. Katie?
This is a company that is relocating back into the United States. It was announced, I believe, on June 21st. It is locating in the Transpark. It's going to bring 288 new jobs, and we're providing a 1% withholdings credit to that company over a 10-year period, which matches the state's 3% through their Kentucky Business Investment Program. And so over that 10-year period, the company should receive about $1.2 million through that credit, and then the city will have about $1 million of that back with our .85 that we'll retain.
And these are good-paying jobs, right?
These are, I believe, $1,850 an hour is the average.
That's what you start, okay, yeah, that's great. Anybody have any questions or thank you all for your service on the JDIP? It's a great committee, and it's fun to see the new economic development initiatives come to town. Questions, comments? Okay, call the roll.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigent.
Yes. Ordinance number BG 2021-26, second reading, non-binding. Oh, I'm sorry, binding.
Ordinance rezoning real estate, ordinance rezoning attractive land containing .2325 acre from RM3 Townhouse Multifamily Residential to OPR Office Professional Residential located at 1244 Magnolia Street, presently owned by Keeping It LLC.
Don't move.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Bailey, Mr. Misel.
This is the second reading, it was a 10-0 vote with planning commission, so that's all happened.
I think a 5-0 vote up here, so anybody have any further questions or comments? Call the roll.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigent.
Yes. Ordinance number BG 2021-27.
Second reading, binding. Ordinance relating to budget amendment. Ordinance approving Amendment Number Four to the City of Bowling Green Kentucky Annual Operating Budget for Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty-One.
Sound move.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Beasley Brown. Same situation. It's the second reading. And if anybody doesn't have comments or questions, we'll call the roll.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perrigan.
Yes.
So we're going to go back to our first item tonight, which is Municipal Order Number Twenty Twenty-One dash one oh seven.
Municipal Order approving the promotion of Brad Schargeradzki to the position of Code Enforcement Manager in the Neighborhood and Community Services Department.
Sound move.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Beasley Brown.
May need to come up with a nickname for Brad.
Yeah, Brad S or Brad Schar.
Anyway, I'd like to ask.
I hope I did good.
This is a promotion and to fill a vacancy from a resignation that we had months ago. And I'd like to ask Brent Childers to come up and make his recommendation.
Thought Brad was here earlier. He had to leave.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, Commission, Mayor Pro Tem. Not used to saying that. Doesn't happen very often.
Don't get used to it.
Appreciate the opportunity to come and make this promotion, but also talk about code enforcement. Whenever the position was vacated, we reevaluated the position, sat down with myself, the city manager, HR, and decided that the responsibilities of this position are beyond the scope of what the current job description and pay associated. So we came before you back in February or March with changing it to a manager position, went out and cast a wide net, a very wide net, and had one of the best applicant pools I've ever seen. We scheduled twelve for interview, did the first round of interviews, selected three for second round interviews. Before the second round interview, there was also a two-part writing exercise. What is your thirty, ninety, a hundred and eighty, eighty-day plan? And what does code enforcement mean to the community? To ask the why. Why do we do this? Why does the city invest? Why did the city create this division, this work? And through that process, what we found was the best choice was in-house. The best choice was Brad. And that's why I stand before you to make this recommendation. As Mayor Pro Tem Perrigan said, it's awfully awesome to stand here and make promotions and appointments. And so I get that opportunity. Many times I don't get this opportunity, so I'm going to cherish it. I've got a few notes I want to share with you. So Brad is originally from Fairfax, Virginia. That is his home. He came to work at the city in two thousand fifteen after studying at Christopher Newport University and George Mason University. He spent a career in public service, even as a teenager, working in dispatch, fire service, medical services, corrections, and now in code enforcement. His commitment to community has been there since his childhood. And it was honored before this body several months ago whenever he, during the course of his work, stopped at a house that was on fire and helped pull a lady out that could not exit the house. So Brad is a loyal public servant. I think it is what we all want our public servants to be. Now with that, Brad brings a vision for what code enforcement is. He's had, been with us since two thousand fifteen and had six years to learn and study and see what code enforcement is in the community, what it has been in the community. But also know that you all don't have that same luxury. So I'm going to give you a little bit of the history of what code enforcement is. There is a good side, there is a bad side. Y'all have all seen the movies, so you know the other side. All right, so code enforcement started in this city in the early two thousands when this body said, we need to have an active division that is going to look at how property maintenance is done in this community. So this body invested in that and created a division head, a couple of inspectors, and a support person. That time, that group did about three or four hundred cases in a year. They were active. All right, fast forward to today where we do about nine thousand cases in a year. Also, it also covers our animal control division as part of this. So that's another twenty-six hundred calls for service. So you're talking about, just in the neighborhood of cases, about eleven to twelve thousand cases. So you're talking about fifteen to twenty thousand citizen interactions for six staff members and a support person, so seven staff members. There's a lot of work that goes into this, but I want you to understand the breadth of what they deal with. Most time, we hear about grass, right? That is our number one case is grass. Grass only grows six months out of the year, luckily. Sometimes we have a droughts, we only get five months of grass, so we're able to slow down. But a code enforcement officer has to tell people things that they don't want to do. They have to hit, they have to tell the citizen, the property owner, the person that's paying taxes, that reminds us very frequently that they pay taxes, to do things that maybe they don't want to do, to cut the grass. That they have to do things, remove things from the yard, move the car, clean this up for the betterment of the community. Sometimes that is met with positivity. Okay, you're right, I've been meaning to do this. Sometimes it is met with vitriol hate in response. Just like a lot of things, whenever you tell somebody something that they don't want to do, they respond in a very emotional vulgar sort of way. And that's a daily occurrence for a code enforcement officer in our community. They go from the grass call to the sign call, to the dilapidated fence call, to then they're dealing with a family who doesn't have heat and water and is trying to raise a family in a house with no utilities. They go to the call that is the house that is burned down, the house that is about to burn down if somebody doesn't do something, or the call because somebody's upset because their neighbor's yard isn't as pretty as how they think it should be. That's the life of a code enforcement officer, and that's what they signed up for. And that's what Brad's been doing for the last six years. Now, his vision for what that looks like will continue to be grass. Believe it or not, I can't stop the grass from growing. I can't make sure that everybody in the community mows their grass at nine and three-quarters inches because the rule is ten inches. That's not going to happen. We're still going to do grass. But it's how we approach that is the vision that Brad presented in his second interview where that really came out. How do we approach this? What have you learned? What have you seen? And what we saw was a focus on education and outreach, to make people aware, why do you do these things? Why did this body say, these are the things that we want to hold true and dear in our community? We want that number to be ten inches. We want to make sure that your fence is painted. We want to make sure that people have heat and utilities and have the services that we say are compatible or habitable for human life. We have to explain that why. Learned that lesson several years ago whenever I was on a condemnation of a house because somebody had a, somebody, a property owner had somebody living in an unsafe structure. And I was talking about the window size and why that's important. And I said, well, what does it matter? I said, because in case there's a fire, they can fit out the window so that they can live. Oh, I didn't realize that. I just thought y'all wanted the windows a certain size. No, there is a why. So our why, one of the approaches that Brad will be taking is developing a courtesy notice. One of the things we've seen over the last several years is somebody gets a notice of violation from us. It's very formalized. We let the attorneys touch it, so you know what that turns into. No offense, Hillary, it was under Gene, so we can blame Gene. But the attorneys get ahold of it and it's all this language. And the first thing I hear is, you cited me. I said, no, we didn't. We sent you a notice. No, you cited me. No, we didn't. So now we're stepping back from that and developing a courtesy notice to say, hey, just want you to know, this is a violation. This is why it's a violation. You get it taken care of, no big deal. One page, front and back, real simple. Now, if you don't, we're still going to hold the tools that we have available. Some of those tools include condemnation, some of those tools include repeat offender. We have the tools to step up our enforcement all the way to foreclosure. So we have tools available. But that doesn't, we don't need those tools for everybody. Just as a police officer sometimes just needs to show up and talk to somebody, that is the tool that they need. Just like sometimes the police officer has to step that up and use a different aggressive more methods. We have tools too. Ours just aren't near as cool as their tools. So we have to work with what we have. Education and outreach. What that means isn't just how we send our notices, but it's how we interact with the public, how we go about meeting with the neighborhood associations, how we about, go about out to the communities and take our message out of why we do code enforcement. We do code enforcement because it creates a better community. It creates a better sense of place. It creates better opportunities for, just like you saw a while ago, the two hundred jobs that come to Bowling Green. This creates a sense of pride in our community. That's why we do code enforcement. We understand what that mission is. We also understand how challenging that mission is before us. Because we understand how challenging it is, how it impacts you all as elected officials served to lead in this community. Another part of that is really developing the staff and working on the things that he needs to bring that up. With Brad's promotion creates another vacancy. We've had a vacancy in this division for over a year now. Through COVID, we held a position open, so we've been a position down for over a year. This will put us two down, so we're looking to fill those now. So we're looking for, they are open right now, we reopened them. So we are looking for honorable stand-up candidates who we're going to look to enforce the ordinances set forth by this body, but also do those in a professional courteous manner in compliance with the rules set forth by the General Assembly under state law, the United States Congress, and the founding fathers of this country who set about a constitution that set the roles of how government is to supervise its people. And that's how we understand that those are the roles that we have to live by and those are the roles we have to do. One of the other changes that is coming soon, that you will soon see, is we're renaming it. It's no longer going to be code enforcement, it's no longer going to be animal control. Because that's really not our goal. Our goal is not enforcement, our goal is not control. Our goal is compliance. Our goal has always been to compliance, to get people into compliance through code enforcement. And our goal has always been to protect the animals. So we are going to be the Division of Code Compliance and Animal Protection. That's going to be how we move forward. That's going to be, it doesn't change that the grass keeps growing, it doesn't change that people don't paint their fences, it doesn't change that the neighbors are upset that the, that the neighbor's yard isn't as pretty as theirs. But it's how we go about approaching that and how we deal with those moving forward. That is our future. There is another overarching part of that future that is my vision. So as eleven years of overseeing the department and overseeing code enforcement as a part of that department, I have seen the City of Bowling Green be the leader in code enforcement in Kentucky. There have been many times other cities have come to us to learn, how do you do this? We're trying to get into it. Code enforcement is a new game in Kentucky. Kentucky has always been built on the leave me alone policy for a long time. And so only in the last several years have you seen many of the cities jump on, many of the smaller cities. The bigger cities have been on this game for some time. So we've been seen as that approachable division to learn from, from other cities. But I think the future for us isn't about the grass, isn't about what the letter says. It is what is code enforcement as a tool? And I think code enforcement as a tool can sustain neighborhood change, neighborhood revitalization. We look at, how do we, how are we dealing with our vacant structures? Those create problems in neighborhoods. Those create issues for neighbors, they create issues for the community. How do we deal with those? What are those inventories? You know, how are we going about using those tools that I talked about, the tools of foreclosure, the tools of liens, those tools to really affect change for the good of the community? How do we make sure that we have housing stock available based on the existing housing stock that is out there in the community, it's just not being utilized? I think code enforcement has tools to help address that. To me, that is the future of code enforcement, to really looking at how do we build a better community, which I think is what we all want. There's just a lot of different ways to get there. The only things that are within my purview that are before you tonight is code enforcement. So with that, I make the recommendation for Brad Schargeradzki to the position of Code Enforcement Manager. And I'll entertain any questions or concerns that you might have.
Just comments. Brad, you probably don't realize this, but probably about six years ago, and I was on the other side of that. So I know how much grass is. I was appointed as a, it was something that was going on in court. So Judge Brown kind of appointed me to be the administrator of this property. And I remember calling you and it's like, I got something where I was gone for two weeks. And I, so I do know how like grass is important, but I do know how sometimes it was harsh too. Because I was gone out of town for two weeks and I had a sheriff actually go out there that was cutting the yard. So it's glad to finally see you. You know, that was probably about six years ago, so I won't hold that against you even though it was six years ago. Because it sounds like it was like you were new at the time. I also lived in Alexandria, Virginia, so I know where Fairfax, Virginia is. Loved the food when I was there.
Any other comments or questions? I have a comment if anybody else does not.
I just want to say thank you just to, to be excited about Brad and excited about, or just grateful to our full code enforcement division and that thankless job that they do have to really, you know, to keep everyone safe. He makes sure that we are taking care of our properties and our neighbors so that everyone can go home to a place where they do feel like they have a peace, peaceful, restful place to go home and, and really just relax. So I'm grateful for the role that they play and I'm really excited about the new vision and the new name. I think that is wonderful and just really grateful that you took the time to sort of share with us both, both of your all's vision and where we can go. I'm really excited about the possibilities, especially as we're talking about affordable housing and trying to figure out how do we make sure we have places for all these, you know, new jobs that are coming? Do we have places where everyone can stay? I know making sure that existing housing stock is a safe and I'm a healthy place for a residence to stay. So I'm just really excited about the future of it. So thank you both so much.
And I would be remiss if I did not pass along an invitation. You all are the city manager. Anybody that wants to do a ride-along to see the day in the life of a code enforcement officer, please by all means let me know. We can arrange that. It can be a half-day. We'll maybe pick some cases for that day special for you, but just let me know.
I would like to say thank you Brent and Brad. I'd just like to kind of give you a challenge. When you're in this new management role, if you see you don't have the tools you need to do your job, if we don't have the ordinances that have strong enough teeth, let us know. We'll be here for you. I think we all support a nice, clean, strong community, and we're here to support you and make sure you have what you need to get the job done.
I do have a few words to say, and I haven't really gotten to know Brad, maybe on a couple cases through the computer and whatnot, but, but thanks for your service, community service, Brad, and thanks for saving the person. There's a button down here I don't want to push. I think it calls the police and they're here.
They're here.
So.
They'll respond quickly, I promise.
Gee, because we're in, we're in good shape. I just want to know that you're confident, because Brad has worked in code enforcement for some time. And I'm, I'm your worst, I know that I'm your most vocal commissioner, I believe I am, when it comes to code enforcement. You're confident he can make the necessary adjustments to tackle this huge issue in our community. I just want to say that I received a complaint this weekend, I passed over to you, right? And Mr. Mizel. Some infractions seem very small. My husband and I have apartment buildings. We got a code complaint because one of the screws backed out of the shutter, so the shutter was crooked. You know, a tire was on the grass. They seem rather small. And then we have the High Street guy over here or the lady that's been going twenty years in Briarwood. Twenty years we've been dealing with her in Briarwood, where she is actually diminishing the value of the, of the section of neighborhood, of the property of the people that live in Briarwood. I feel strongly about it and I'm going to say it. The values of the homes surrounding her, the values are diminished. I know personally somebody that had to walk away from his next door home of her and send it back to the bank because he couldn't sell his house. There'd be no way somebody would buy that house with that situation. So hopefully in this restructure and the plan, and Commissioner Hill is correct, if we need to tighten the codes to get rid of people that have been wreaking havoc on our neighborhood for decades, everybody needs to have the same standard in code. If my structure or any citizen's structure doesn't look as bad as somebody that's allowed to do that day after day, that I probably wouldn't think that they should have a ticket until the folks over here have some sort of fire lit under them to get their properties cleaned up. This High Street situation is horrible. We've had a citizen invest literally millions of dollars in that area and, and anybody wants to drive down that street and I'd encourage everybody, leave, go that way, see what you see. It's horrible. So I just want to, want to know that, that you're confident, because you're the hiring manager, and I'm not standing in the way of that, that we've picked a candidate that can make the necessary adjustments and changes and work with us on whatever codes need to change to get these recurring problems out of our city.
Would not be here if I was not confident in Brad's ability to serve as a code enforcement manager. I wouldn't bring you all a recommendation that I don't believe in. Understand that.
How are we going to fix the problems, the those recurring problems?
The issue that you're bringing up is that not everything is a violation. One of the challenges that we've seen in code enforcement over the years in my eleven years here and talking with other professionals in this industry, and it comes down to definitions. How do you define attractive?
Let's redefine it for those, those issues.
So we set standards that apply to the city of Bowling Green. Whether you're living on Woodford Street or you're in Bentry, that same standard applies. And that's how we approach that enforcement. That's how we do it in a respectful manner, no matter what street you're on. We understand the challenges that are before us because we've lived through those challenges that have been in the past. Now, I can't promise you that I have every answer ready to go, that I can solve every problem or that Brad has the potential to do that, nor would any other candidate coming in here have those same opportunities. It's about what is the acceptable minimum in our community? You all set that. We don't set the ordinance.
For those cases, in anybody that's seen those cases, we're certainly falling short, I guarantee you. And if it belongs up here, then I challenge us to make, make the necessary changes. People's property value should not be diminished because of what's going on in the neighbor's house. And I get shrubs and all that. No, everybody can look past a shrub. But you can't look past people, what's going on on, on, on those two streets. It's, it's bad.
That's a topic that this body would like to discuss at a future time. I think that's an opportunity, but I don't think that that discussion weighs on the value of Mr. Schargeradzki being in this position and his confidence.
At your confidence level and him being able to tackle these are big issues.
Think he understands the challenge.
Wanted to hear that out loud. And yes, I would be the first one to say, we do need to, we need to solve those problems for our neighbors. We definitely do. It comes down to respect, and that, that just shows zero respect for the neighborhood that you're living in. You know, and respect for your neighbors and, you know, I get an ugly shrub or grass or something or a shingle that's fallen off of a building or, those things are so easy, easily fixed. But just when your entire yard is covered with debris and things and you're running businesses out of places that don't have permits to run businesses and it's just, it's gotten out of control.
I will let you know that we opened a case last week on High Street, so there's an open and active code enforcement case on that property.
Perfect.
We have worked with that tenant and property owner for a number of times over the years. We have responded every time one called. Any other questions or comments from the commission?
Brad still has hair, but if, if I was him, I'd be pulling my hair out of my shirt.
He'll, he'll learn after dealing with me. That's a real possibility.
You will have the support, Brad, of Sue Perrigan. I won't answer for everybody, they can all answer for themselves.
Brent, I just have one comment. I appreciate all the work that you're doing. Brent, I just have one comment. I appreciate all the work that you're doing. I know just this limited time knowing you, that there's probably been a number of years that you was a one-man show and you was understaffed. So anything the City Commission can do to try to help you out, I think that we should do it. So I just want to applaud like, the work that you have done.
Absolutely. Echo. Thank you, Mr. Childers. Okay, has anybody, everybody signed up for?
I'll call the roll real quick.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm so confused where I am now.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perridge.
Yes. We make everybody else stand, Brad. We just make them stand, just because. Thanks. Thank you. Look forward to working with you. So if, does everybody sign up for public comments on this sheet that wants to actually come up and speak? Yes, last chance. Okay. I think we want to just dive into this. There's five. We could go get through it instead of taking a break first. Is that okay? Okay. I gotta go. I mean, I don't have to go, but I have a go-ahead. First is Jill Nixon. And just come up to the podium, state your name and address, and I'll put a little timer on the thing. We all have five minutes to speak, and I'll let you know about 4.5 in, okay, Ms. Nixon? I'll let you wrap up. Thank you very much for coming.
Short.
Yeah. Thank you for coming, and thank you for whatever you're going to talk about.
I'm Jill Nixon. My address is 1190 Drake's Ridge Lane. I'm the president of the Republican Women's Club of South Central Kentucky. We are the largest Republican Women's Club in the state. We try to stay informed and do our research before we make a stance on a topic. We became concerned upon hearing about the possibility of hiring a homeless coordinator for the city. We also became aware of a meeting that was set on this topic on the 22nd. We were told that the public wouldn't be able to speak at that meeting. So I wanted to come and ask a couple of questions that I would hope that you all would address at that meeting on the 22nd. I want to thank the mayor and you all for scheduling that meeting on the 22nd, and asking the nonprofits to come and speak about what they are doing for the county, for the homeless population, for the county. I do think it's important that the city commissioners and research this topic before agreeing to spend taxpayer funds. So we do appreciate that that meeting's been set. The first question I'd like to address is what definition is the city using to define what the homeless population is? If it's according to the HUD definition, according to the HUD, the K-count, the number of homeless in Warren County is 165. So if it is that definition, my next question would be how much, what's the amount of taxpayer funds that the city's willing to spend on the homeless population in addition to what the other, you know, the nonprofits are already spending? My second question is what is the goal of the city regarding the homeless population? Is it to make the homeless more comfortable, or is it to change their homeless status and try to get them out of the homeless situation? I think that we all have the same goal. We do not want Bowling Green to have a homeless problem. I think where there might be a difference is on how we define homeless. Is there a problem? And if so, how do we address that issue? So I would love for you all to speak about that at that meeting on the 22nd. Thank you.
I'll say this, and we're not going to give responses to things up here. It's for you to tell us. But at that meeting, and correct me if I'm wrong to my colleagues, I think you can put a letter to the mayor and the commissioners, like you can write a letter, and he would read that. Is that correct? Am I correct?
This will go out, if it hasn't already, on social media, but anyone who wants to submit feedback or input, they can do so by emailing the city clerk's office, and that email address is citiclerk@bgky.org. And those are due on or by July 13th.
So you can, you know, submit that, and then that'll be a part of the meeting. So thank you, Ms. Nixon.
Thank you.
And your 42 seconds left. Very good. Way to go. Teresa Steenburgen? Thank you, Ms. Steenburgen.
Thank you, Council. Appreciate being able to come tonight and speak my concerns about a red light here in Bowling Green.
Could you just state your name and address, Ms. Steenburgen? It's always for the record. It's okay. I've made 18 mistakes. I've been counting them tonight.
That's okay. Thank you. My name is Teresa Steenburgen. I live at 3158 Compass Avenue at South Glen Gables. I come tonight to speak to you all on behalf of being concerned for people's lives. I'm an RN. I take life very seriously. And what I was involved in was a wreck three weeks ago, very bad wreck, three-car collision, and mine, I hit head-on. I'm very fortunate to be here tonight and stand and talk to you all about people's lives. Now, we know that here in the last few weeks, the sun is changing on its axis, and it's brighter, and there is a red light, as the lady spoke while ago, earlier, about the fixing sidewalks, red lights, the construction, the pavement. And that fits in with my concern on a red light. This red light is on 31W bypass. If you know where that pink building is that's called Beverly Hills Consignment, there is a red light there right before you get to their building. And I think that's maybe East 15th and Magnolia. Don't hold me to that, but I know I've described where the red light is with the concerns. Now, the sun was shining direct with that red light, and it still looked yellow. Cars was going in front of me, and zoom, I go. And I'm looking at it, and it's yellow. But the sun made that light reflect like it was still ready to go, you know, for me to go. And it has also been brought to my attention. I have many friends, and they said even coming to work of a morning that way, going into town, when the sun's coming from the east, it's very blinded to them. They're sitting there at the light like this, trying to see, you know, if they can, it's okay, and for their safety to go and not have another accident like I did. And it's the same way going with the Southwest when you're going out of Bowling Green. And on up the 31W bypass, it's 10th Avenue, there is a light there that is lower, but yet tractors and trailers can still go under it, and it comes out and across, even like you see in the big cities. And that's not up so high that you're looking up this way at the light, you're looking more this way. And I feel like for people's safety and their lives and well-being, that if we had something done at that red light to save incidences from happening, and maybe a death, or somebody being invalid the rest of their life, I think that's a very major concern to get that red light changed out. And, you know, and even as soon as possible. You know, it's a very serious thing there. The guy at the collision center told me that there had been more red lights here in Bowling Green at that, more wrecks there in Bowling Green at that place. So I'm just very concerned. I wanted to bring it to you all's attention, see if we can get something done for all others. I would hate for anybody's family to have to be involved like I was. And I was fortunate I could walk away, because they said I was in a Land Rover, and it was a head-on collision. And they said the Land Rover saved my life. So I appreciate the time and hope you all consider and get this taken care of.
We appreciate it as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Most time we find things out, it comes from a citizen, and I think that's great, how it should be. Thank you for taking the time. And sorry about your wreck.
I don't mind that you walked in, you know. It feels that bad, it's, you know, it's a blessing that, you know, you were able to walk away from a head-on collision.
Mr. Tuttle, Eric Tuttle? Welcome, Mr. Tuttle, if you don't mind to state your name and address.
Eric Tuttle. I am a local businessman. I live at 400 St. Albans in Indian Hills. And if you see me up here, normally it means that I have numbers. So if you mind, if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to approach.
Thank you, sir.
I'm here tonight mostly to talk about the homeless population. Obviously, regardless of your political views, we're all very concerned about homelessness and what the principal causes of it are, and how we as citizens can address it. My wife and I spend a fair amount of time with our church and helping to try to fund and address that, not only here, but in other countries, Burma, you know, we try to do a lot in that space, because it is important. One of the things that I've heard, as I've listened to people talk about this, is that there's different definitions of what homelessness is. And so one of the things in this little attachment that I gave you is HUD's actual definitions. They're on the last two pages, which is the criteria for defining homelessness, and then effectively the recording or record-keeping requirements for municipalities with regard to homelessness. In our state, we actually have an organization called the Kentucky Housing Corporation. And they're a privately funded slash state agency that pursues tracking and counting homeless people and people who are potentially homeless, or they're endangered in some way. And there's a number of criteria associated with that. And on the first two pages of that, this document that I gave you, it actually defines the state of Kentucky's numbers and then Warren County's numbers. And if we look at those county numbers, as I believe someone referenced earlier, there's about 170 to 190 homeless people who live in Warren County by, based on the HUD's definition of homelessness. Now, this is done by a process where they go out and sample. On one day a year, they go out and count. Well, that may not be an effective way of determining how many homeless people we have, because obviously, as sure as the police know, you might see these 10 homeless people today, and you might see a different set of homeless people tomorrow. We drive around here and we see these individuals on corners. We see them begging. We see them asking for resources. We see them receiving meals. We see them at the homeless inn that the churches put together. So those populations vary. Some of them are drug users. Some of them are people who are in a state of trouble where, you know, they've lost their job, they don't have any money, they get kicked out of their house, they don't have anywhere to go. Some of those people are vagrants. They're drifting through. So counting them is something that the government spends a lot of resources on, and we have local agencies that spend a lot of resources attempting to assist with that. My concern in establishing a position at the city level is that government's first reaction to any problem is everyone else is incompetent, therefore we have to try to do it all over again. And I would urge you against that. If we are to make a change here, the change would be, first of all, to focus on the key components of homelessness, affordability, housing. We have a zoning board. We have a commission here trying to raise wages by bringing in better jobs. We have ordinances and things associated with making housing not necessarily more affordable, but safer. And so when you look at those things, those are all the things that this city council has as levers to pull, to influence. But adding a position focused on something that there are already five other organizations here, two state boards, and one federal government agency that's already out there focused on it, isn't going to solve the problem. All it's going to do is redirect tax dollars to do something that's redundant. If we want to address the problem, why don't we look at some other ways? And I believe there's some other people going to speak tonight, but there are ways to involve those agencies in our community through grants, through participatory actions, through, by bringing in HUD, by bringing in these state and federal agencies, that don't involve establishing yet another position. That's probably my timer.
It is, sir.
By establishing yet another position here. We don't have a position here to fix potholes. Why? Well, we've got an agency here that deals with potholes. We don't have one that runs around and worries about grass. Why? Because we've got an agency here that worries about compliance. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Mr. Tuttle. I appreciate you coming and sharing your viewpoint and thoughts with us. We have one more on the agenda tonight. And if you would like, do you have an extra one of these? You can leave this with the city clerk for our records? That's okay. Mr. Rob Holdsworth? Oh, I am so sorry. I looked over Tanya Tuttle. It looks like the same address, so I'll assume that you all are together. State your name and your address, and we'll go from there.
So my name is Tanya Tuttle. I live at 400 St. Albans Drive. I am here, my husband and I are with an organization called Warren County Conservatives. And so I had, I come here asking questions and want to share some thoughts with regard to the homeless considerations and debate. I guess I would start with questions, and some of them we've heard. I would really like to know, how does the city of Bowling Green define homelessness, and what authority we're using as a source for that definition? Exactly how many homeless people do we have in Bowling Green? Do we know that number? And what's, do they meet the definition? Are they people who sleep on the streets, or are they, is there another criteria for that definition? I think knowing a definition and agreeing upon who is homeless is important to carrying forth our discussions. I guess my concern is that we are considering with the proposed homeless advocacy or coordinator position, possibly spending tens of thousands of taxpayer dollars to fund a position addressing a subject we don't really know much about and for a relatively small portion of our population. I don't think the city of Bowling Green are the homeless experts. It sounds like we're asking taxpayers to solve a problem that people have been struggling with for a long time. It's such a complicated issue. I don't think it's our place. I don't think it's the place of the Bowling Green City Commission. Homelessness is a tough topic. I really think we should turn to those who are the experts in addressing this issue. Hotel Inc., Room at the Inn, Matthew25, they've been working with these issues for a long time, and they know these people. For those who are especially passionate about this topic, I think we should talk to these different groups, volunteer some time, maybe actually work with the homeless community, and dedicate some time and efforts to that before we go and decide that maybe a government position is the way to solve the problem. That's what I have to say.
Thank you very much, Ms. Tuttle. Appreciate your perspective and for you all coming today. Sorry to overlook your name, but Rob Holdsworth, our last public comment.
Good evening. I'm going to reference some notes here, because I did not intend to speak, but Tanya told me I had to. So it's probably pretty rare for a citizen to come up with an idea for a program, and also an idea on how to fund it. And that's why Tanya told me that I should come up and talk about the American Rescue Plan. I'm sure you're familiar. I got the information from the Kentucky Association of Counties and Kentucky League of Cities. I'm certain you're all over it. We know that Bowling Green's going to get almost $15 million in the next two years, and that we know that one of the authorized uses of those dollars is to, is within qualified census tracts to target low-income communities such as the homeless, and provide assistance through specifically one of the uses is nonprofits. And that is sort of the context. And that is sort of the context in which I'm here to, to ask you to please consider, instead of hiring another civil servant, nothing against civil servants, I actually happen to be a civil servant on the federal level. So love my brothers and sisters in government service. However, I've also spent the past, I'd say, four years with Room in the Inn. I've slept with the homeless community in my church, I've broken bread many times, now on the board of Room in the Inn. And I, I truly believe that nonprofits, nonprofits such as Room in the Inn, Hotel Inc., Salvation Army, you know, they are the hands and feet that are out there in the community that, that know the folks, that have the, let's face it, a lot of folks are mentally challenged, they're, they're homeless because they can't maintain employment because they have mental issues and that's, that's how they ended up there. So they need case management, they need care and, and we need to know who they are. We need to, to see them every night and every day and follow up with them. Are you taking your meds? Are you going to see your case manager? And I think those things are better done by organizations, by faith-based organizations like Hotel Inc. and Room in the Inn, Salvation Army. What I would like to see is maybe on the 22nd at this meeting, you know, maybe a proposal for a competitive, for these nonprofits to, to submit competitive proposals to man this position and, and tell the city how they're gonna do it. You know, using these local fiscal recovery funds that are coming to the city from the US Treasury, how would you use this money to perform this work for the city? I think that's probably the best use of the taxpayer dollars rather than hiring another government employee. That's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time. And as I said before, it's... It's great when the public comes, whether they're, you know, speaking against something that we've done or something that we might do or for something or, this is where, this is where, where we, we get to listen. On 22nd, there was a lot of interest in, in this, this homeless conversation. We will be having a conversation at Sloan Convention Center at 4:30? 4:30? It'll be in one of the salons, correct? Or in the big room? In a meeting room at the, at this convention center. You can go in, in the lobby, you'll see a, a sign to tell you where to go. It is an important topic and it's an important topic for the community to weigh in. It's not a one-sided topic. This is a community issue and, and the community is invited to come. Draft a note of your perspectives and whatnot and those, those will go into the record and they'll be read and heard and just feel free to come to any meeting that, that we have, first and third Tuesdays, 4:30, City Hall. We're, we're pretty prompt and, and we'll be here. So, but, but I can't thank the folks enough for coming and, and sharing and this, well, Mr. Mizel.
Those comments, just, just another reminder, they're due the 13th, right, Ashley? And you, you email your comments to citiclerk@bgky.org.
Perfect.
Cause those will only, will have limited time on the 22nd.
Sure.
So we ask for written comments from anyone that wants to, 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 to share those.
And, and thanks for saying that, Jeff, cause anybody that's out there that wants to, but we're also all have email and you can find that on the city page, city's homepage, bgky.org. You can email us anytime and, and I get a lot of them and, and it's okay. We, we want them, that's what we're here for. We're representatives of the citizens of Bowling Green. Lot of them are watching, lot of them are here and that's, that's a great way to communicate. Or we, our phone numbers are on that page. Welcome a phone call. So, you know, we're, we're accessible. That's, 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 we're very accessible commissioners where, you know, and, you know, the public, public comments are a great way to, to come and share your thoughts. So thank you all very much. Mr. Mizel, anything else? We made it, we made it together. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.